Paul Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Uh, consideration, action, consent agenda. Roll call.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so ordered. That brings us to the gas authority. Roll call.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert. Larry Church.
Sure.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
Uh, consideration and action consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call.
Eddie Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert. Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
Consideration and action consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, so ordered. That brings us to the city council. Uh, meeting, call, order, roll call.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Eddie Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert. Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is I gonna miss you? Oh, God, whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another for you, God, our love. Amen. Consideration and action of consent agenda. Motion to approve. Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Elections and appointments. Uh, consideration, possible action to approve the following mayoral appointments of board members to the Seminole Community and Wellness Facilities Authority. New members Kevin Kisi and Randy Lawson, uh, for a term until February of twenty twenty four. These have to be voted on individually, as I recall. Motion to approve. Uh, we vote then on Kevin. Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the second appointee is Randy Lawson.
Need to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, Donna Wallace to replace Phil Biddy, who resigned, term expiring, uh, in February of twenty twenty two.
Move to approve.
Check.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, reappointment of Corey Crabtree until March twenty twenty four.
I don't know about that guy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree. John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the city council? If not, then we move to approvals and acceptances. Uh, number one bids. Consideration and possible action to approve soliciting sealed bids for construction of wrought iron fencing at Maple Grove Cemetery.
Is that gonna be the store on the east side?
Uh, on the south side.
By the road in the south?
Yes, sir. Just the south side this first go.
It's the most visible side.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. It's been second. Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
I'm concerned some of those people might try to get out of there, believe me. But, yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of a new double decked gas convection oven at the Heritage House at state contract bid price of eight thousand two hundred dollars from Cook's Correctional to be funded from Series two thousand and six bond proceeds. This is a budgeted item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolutions. Number three, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number twenty nineteen oh three. A resolution supporting the efforts to retain governance of Seminole State College through a local board of regents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Do we have anyone want to speak to that?
I'd be glad to answer any questions. Uh, we certainly appreciate the council's consideration of this. The task force recommendations uh, from the state regents have been to, uh, remove the board of regents locally for six rural community colleges and to eventually merge those institutions with other institutions. So, uh, we've had a lot of strong local support against that and we believe it's in the best interest of the college, our students in the community, to retain our local board. So, we appreciate the council's consideration. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any arguments? If not, roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us then to ordinances. Item number four, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number twelve twenty six. An ordinance rezoning a portion of Sixth Street from C three commercial to, uh, I one industrial. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration, possible action to approve ordinance number twelve twenty seven. An ordinance rezoning a parcel of land at Fourth Street and Oak from R three multifamily residential to C three commercial.
I should've asked before I did the other one, was there any feedback from any of the residents?
I just wanted to know where it was.
Across the street from the chamber. Right.
Okay. Across the street from where I hear that.
About across the street from the chamber, south of the chamber.
Was there any complaints or anything from any of the neighbors?
That's, I, I think we're, we're down here behind the bus station, right?
No, that was the first one.
That's.
That's what he's asking.
That's what, yeah. Isn't, isn't the Fourth Street note getting that next to the tag agency?
No.
Oh, no, that's the street over, I'm sorry.
No, the first one was down behind the bus station. This one is gonna be... Where, where are you looking, Sharon? The, uh, the planning? The planning commissioner approved both, right?
Yes, sir. East, uh, it's, uh, east of the chamber.
East of the chamber.
East or?
East.
South, isn't it?
That's similar versus similar. East and south. It's, uh, Oak Street. There's a, uh, building that the Seminole Nation owns that used to be a home health center and, uh, you know what I'm talking about?
It's the Finston Lot.
Yes, and there's a, there's a lot just to the west of it, and that's the area of Fourth and Oak.
Motion to approve.
I think it's already been moved in six seconds. Ready for roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number six, consideration, possible action to approve ordinance number twelve twenty eight. An ordinance amending the inside wiring code Title V, Section five A three, to raise minimum residential amps to two hundred.
Sounds like Greek to me. What's, what's that mean for some?
Well, many times they're going to set a one hundred amp service and what we're finding with today's appliances and, and everything.
Just not enough juice.
They, they take a lot of juice. Mike Grant having to charge his cell phone, that can take. As much as he has to stay on it, so.
I see the lights are down occasionally.
Yeah, that's Mike, Mike having to charge that cell phone so many times. Uh, no, it's, it's a necessary thing. We're finding that two hundred amps is gonna be a minimum going forward and, uh, some of the other communities have already gone to this and we're just catching up a little bit.
Does this in any way affect our insurance?
Not that I'm aware of. The, the, it will be a little bit more expensive and it's not what you might think. It doesn't double the price of setting that box. Does anybody recall? It seemed like a hundred and thirty-five dollars more.
Yeah, no, it was like sixty-five dollars more between a, a one hundred amp and a two hundred amp. That's what we figured out.
So existing homes don't have to?
Yeah, unless they're being rewired. Now, once they try to bring it up to code, it'll require two hundred, hundred amp service, so.
Which I believe, if you don't mind, sir, if you, I believe a box, like you said, was like a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and sixty-five dollars, something like that.
Right.
For a two hundred amp box.
It's not, it's not a lot of money, especially when you're getting double the amperage, so. We, we recommend it as a staff, so. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Brings us to current business. Number seven, consideration and possible action to approve the Seminole Chamber of Commerce request to host the annual Mayan Oklahoma Festival at Municipal Park and to close Gristle Drive from Fairway Drive to Keith Marshall on Saturday, April the sixth, twenty nineteen, from seven AM to seven PM.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eight, consideration and possible action to approve accepting a thirty-five thousand dollar award from Oklahoma Emergency Management for the fiscal year twenty nineteen Emergency Management Performance Grant. Anyone in favor of taking money?
Yep.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Number nine, consideration and possible action to approve the addendum to service agreement option of ambulance supplemental payment program with Advanced Data Processing, Inc., a subsidiary of Intermedix, the city's ambulance building service provider.
You guys want the long or the short? Short is we're gonna make more money. The long is we've been working on this with the Oklahoma EMS Association since early two thousand eighteen. We finally got the governor to create a plan or dictate the health department to come up with a plan to receive these federal funds that other states around us have been getting for several years. Basically, what it's gonna amount to is another eighty bucks for every Medicaid run that we do. That's sixty to sixty-five percent of our runs through our EMS department right now. So what will happen is this company, it doesn't cost us any money upfront. They do all the legwork. They do all the billing. They run all the paperwork. They collect all the money. They send us our check, uh, June of every year. They take their cut out of it before... If they don't collect any money, we don't owe them anything. The more they collect, the more they make. So the, the weight is on them. This, this was passed in October, November of two thousand eighteen. It went into law for the state of Oklahoma. We are like one of three in the state that have signed up for this. Us, Guthrie, and I think it's Broken Arrow. So all we're gonna do is recoup more money.
When you say the check, where's the check go?
Well, it comes to the city.
City?
Yeah.
Do we get a jacket like that?
If you want one. You need this in St. Louis.
So just for sake of investment purposes, how many points did they, they get?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent.
Yep. But we don't have to do anything.
Yeah, well, sounds fair.
They pay at the end of the year after? They get the total?
Yes, sir.
One second year?
Yeah. So we're actually already collecting that fund. They backed up and they started collecting for us, uh, January one. So if everything goes all right, then they'll just continue collecting it and we'll get a check. We'll actually get one this June. It'll be a partial and then we'll get a full check for the following two thousand twenty-one.
This system's much better than our old system.
Well, it, it's actually, yeah, this is actually tied into our current billing system, so.
So you're talking about collections on the liquid accounts, right?
No, no, no. No, this is an additional eighty dollars for Medicaid patients.
Just Medicaid patients.
And this is a federally funded program that Texas, Kansas, Missouri, Colorado, they've all been doing for several years. It started back east. It slowly worked our, its way our way and we're just trying to get on the bandwagon.
What kind of money are we talking about them pulling for a year at a time?
Uh, we're, the testament that they gave us was somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand dollars extra.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number ten, discussion and possible action regarding the possibility of postponing the scheduled purchase of a new fire truck with proceeds of the twenty-ten bond money in lieu of purchasing two new type, uh, one-nine-one-one ambulances to replace aging high-mileage vehicles. So, back in two thousand and ten, actually probably two thousand and nine, when we put this before the people as a vote, uh, our city council wanted to put that in the form of a resolution. And they put many things on, uh, what I, what we called the bonded money, which was we bought, uh, a few ambulances, several police cars, radios. Uh, uh, we did several streets in that bond and, uh, a lot of public works things. One of the things that we put in that resolution was in, in essence, a timeline of every three years, we'd buy this many ambulances or this many police cars. At the end of the, in twenty twenty, as this thing expires, our intent was to save up three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and buy a new pumper truck. Uh, we had anticipated at the time that, uh, engine five oh one, uh, would be, uh, near the end of its useful life and that we would likely need a new pumper truck. Well, in reality, what's going on in the fire industry is that the, there's several things. I'll try to make it short, but, uh, really what most of the fire departments are going to what they call a quint. Chief probably needs to be given this speech, but I'm gonna act, I'm gonna act smarter than I am. Uh, so, uh, they call it a quint, meaning that it's able to run on four different types of activities. So it could be a rescue unit. I think, uh, in some cases, it's got a ladder, uh, and ladder, ladder, uh, company can be in there as well. So that is a much more expensive piece of equipment than a simple pumper truck. We're talking roughly a little over two times what we have saved up. So you'd probably be looking in the nine hundred fifty thousand dollar range to buy a new quint. Baker, uh, Chief Baker had come to me and we'd talked a little bit. He said, you know what? We're a desperate situation on our ambulances. Uh, we're, we're running almost double the ambulance runs we were back in two thousand and ten. And, uh, we're putting a lot of road miles on these smaller units, which is exactly what we had designed. Uh, the bigger, we call them buses, the bigger ambulances with the much bigger frame and boxes, uh, sometimes those have to run out into the rural areas. And those things are not built to, the front ends especially are not built for that kind of wear and tear. So, uh, Chief had asked that you guys consider the, the possibility of taking that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of putting it into a pumper truck and put it into the purchase of the new larger buses, uh, excuse me, ambulances. Uh, so that with a much bigger frame, we're talking about going to a bigger frame, a more sturdy frame. It, there was a little bit of discussion. I know we've had some complaints about the rough ride and some of those heavier units like that. But it would offer a longevity that we can go in, uh, up and down rural roads and still be able to keep units intact. Uh, we're just not gonna be able to keep doing that if we, uh, i-if we keep running the, the specific units that we're running now, they're just not gonna last very much longer. Uh, we're kinda going on a wing and a prayer at this point, so, uh, we're going to have to come up with some other plan. And certainly the light duty vans that we're running on the transports, there's no way they can take the beating that the rural roads will put on them, so. Uh, that's kinda what we wanted to put in front of you today. It's not, we're not necessarily as, asking for a decision tonight. More that we put it in front of you guys to consider, hey, is this, which of these is a priority? And in fact, do we want to back out of that ordinance that we did in two thousand and ten where we said we would buy a pumper at the end of this, uh, sales tax with the, with the leftover money? Or have things changed enough for us to buy ambulances instead? So that's, we just wanna put out there for discussion at this point.
Well, having tried to ride out so many bad decisions in my life, just because I made the decision, I didn't see the changes that came along. Uh, if we don't need a pumper truck at this point in time, now we're gonna make an extra eighty bucks for a trip with an ambulance.
Chief, you wanna give them a quick status on, on the equipment, specifically the five oh one and others that
Yeah.
are pertinent to why they would make this decision?
Our, our oldest apparatus that we have on engine pumper wise is a nineteen ninety-seven, so we're twenty-plus years into that thing. You guys understand that we have ramped up our fire prevention tremendously to where I've gotta go back four years in order to find twelve structured fires inside the city limits. That's pretty much unheard of. So when we took over EMS nine years ago, we didn't think it was gonna be the, the monster that it is. So we run roughly about five hundred fire cars that consist of grass fires, car wrecks, house fires, all that stuff, to three thousand EMS runs a year. So we've seen an increase in our EMS runs from two thousand seventeen to eighteen. We increased four hundred and fifty-five runs just on EMS. Now, our engines are in great shape. Our pumpers, our fire trucks are in great shape. At this point, we kinda feel like our dire need right now is EMS, is ambulances. With the two that we have now have roughly about ninety to ninety-five thousand miles on them. I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but it goes from a cold start to, we're at the scene on the other side, on the west side of Seminole in less than five minutes. So it's got some wear and tear. I've got a couple of them. One of them is running on, it's a V-ten. It's running on nine cylinders. I don't know how much longer it's gonna make it. Uh, the second one, it's running on all ten cylinders, but it's, it's in and out of the shop constantly. Uh, when we're talking about a heavier duty frame, the ones that we have now is a van chassis, just like a cargo van. And we're wearing those front ends out, so we're replacing those twice a year. What we wanna change to is what they call a Type One, and it's a Ford S-series truck chassis. It's actually the truck body. So a little heavier duty. Uh, we just got back from St. Louis, our manufacturer, today, about an hour ago. Uh, City Manager Saxon had said something about the rough ride in the back. They've got a new system out that's called Liquid Spring. It's gonna take care of our issues with that. A lot of that is Oklahoma Robbins too. I mean, uh, we can't, we can't fix that, but our ambulance situation right now, and that's the reason why I had to come to Mr. Saxon to talk to him, our concern now is EMS. That's our bread and butter. We are an EMS department with a little bit of fire sprinkled on top of it. Whether the guys like it or not, that's what we are. So our, my objective right now is to make sure that our EMS is up and running and we're taking care of our citizens that have tasked us to take care of them.
Question, Chief, the, the pumper that you were talking about, with what you've seen in the past year, what, what's the lifespan that we have left in the pumper trucks?
Uh, our pumper right now, you can probably get another five to ten years out of it. Now, the next newest other than that is the Quint. We bought a Quint in two thousand and seven. Is that right? Two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
So it's the ladder truck. We call it the Quint, but it's got a ladder, it's got a pump, it's got the foam. It's the first unit out. We can take care of ninety-five percent of everything that we do with that truck, which is just a little over ten years old. We've probably got another ten years with that. We've probably got another ten years with that. So, it, that's one of the things that we have talked about is where, if we come back, we try to renew the tax, that's an option that we need to put into that tax for the next go around.
Any time to budget it?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, a, a couple of things come into play, and stop me if you don't wanna drill this deep, but uh, the ISO gives us extra points for running Quints. So, if you buy a, a new pumper and you put it in play, you, it doesn't really help us, uh, if any. Uh, what gives you more points is getting the Quints rolling, so, uh, you, you get to reduce your insurance rating, I'm sorry, I'm using ISO as everybody knows what that is. It's just an insurance format that people, many of the insurance companies use to price insurance. So, uh, when we get a lower rating, uh, like these guys have done fantastic, we're, we are doing great and, and, and I'm gonna push them and, and they've told me that we've got a great chance at going to an ISO rating of two. Uh, I don't know how many departments in Oklahoma are a two, but it's not very many. I mean, we're in very rare company where we're at now, and if we go to a two, it'll even be more, so. But we're, we're good at putting the equipment in play that we need to, to drive that ISO number down so that our citizens receive a much lower insurance rating. So, the compressed air foam, is CAF, what's it stand for?
Compressed air foam.
Okay, that's, alright, compressed air foam, that helps us, uh, so all of the things that your staff has put in play have helped drive us down on that insurance cost. And we just don't feel like an investment on that pumper is gonna do much for us, especially in light of the equipment is not being heavily used right now, uh, thanks to good fire prevention. Uh, but certainly, we see that the ambulances are a priority, so. We just, again, we just wanted you guys to start thinking through that. If you don't wanna make a, a decision tonight, we certainly get that, it kinda sprung it on you, but uh, we, we do know, as he said, some of the heavier ambulances, the big boxes, we'll call them, uh, they're wearing out quickly on the, on the rural roads.
And it's a, to guys, to give you guys a timeline, it's a twelve month process from the time, if you guys decide to go that route, from the time we place the order, it's twelve months before we receive those apparatus.
The ambulance?
The amb- ambulance. So, that's, that's kinda what we're dealing with, when I talked to Steve also, was the current situation that we have is definitely something that we needed to bring to you guys, uh, and show you that our need has kinda took a different direction than what it originally was ten years ago.
So, if we get, if both these ambulance goes, go down in July, even if we ordered them today, it'll be next February before we get the first delivery to replace one, so.
Does anybody know, I found about the average age of citizens in some of our areas? The average age is?
Uh, the, the last time I checked, I thought it was like thirty-four.
Can we act on this tonight, or it has to be held and, and brought in the next council meeting?
If you act on it tonight, say again?
Can we act on, on this vote tonight?
Sure.
To transfer that?
Uh, yeah, I, I think you can. Yeah, we'll, we'll still go through the bidding process, which will give you a little bit of leeway on, hey, that's, we decided differently.
Uh, she's sold me, I, council, I'd like to vote on it if possible.
You wanna make a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir.
Motion second. Motion's made in the second. Roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just to clarify, the vote was to withhold the purchase of the new pumper truck, right?
Correct.
And to reallocate those proceeds to two ambulances and to proceed with staff, to, to proceed with that?
That's what I'm saying.
Number eleven, consideration of possible action to approve renewing the public works contract with Silver Star Construction for a period of five years. And, uh, Chris, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, I, yeah, this is just the rates they charge us for the services, right?
Silver Star?
Yes.
The only thing, it's in the contract, but I don't like the way it's worded on here. I'd just like to approve the, I'd like to approve it, uh, with Silver Star Construction, subject to a yearly review and renewal for five years. I just want it specified that it's, in the motion that
Okay.
it has the yearly renewal, I don't, you know, it looks odd, 'cause we're not supposed to do more than a year at a time.
Okay.
That reads, I didn't like it.
You good with that?
Yeah, the, uh, we can't allocate anything anyway over the budget year, under the municipal budget act anyway. I'm thinking that to even do that, we would have to go underneath the utilities authority to even bind ourselves over a year. So, these are just a lock in the prices, I'm assuming, is that right?
That's all it is.
So.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with you, with you moving that, with the vote here.
Do it in their table.
If we don't move it?
I'm moving it like that?
Yeah, I, I would.
So, the motion is for an annual review?
Yeah, they're just subject to a yearly
Subject to annual review.
That's fine, that's fine.
And is there a second to that amendment?
No. Oh, second.
Oh, okay, it's been moved in second, and this is an amendment just to insert, uh, an annual review provision.
It's in the contract already, I just don't like the way it reads on our motion, that's all, just.
Okay.
All in favor, we'll call a roll call on that?
Sir, Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, then we come back to the main motion now, with that amendment having passed, is there a motion to approve the, uh, um, contract?
I'm willing to approve.
I thought that was all in there.
No.
You want the an- you voted for the annual review?
Now, we wanna vote on the contract with that amendment, and there, it's moved by, uh, Larry Church, is there a second?
A second.
Second, alright, roll call.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings, brings us to reports. Um, Mayor is involved in work at the ER at the hospital, so he doesn't have a report for us, city manager?
Yes, uh, I've got several things for you tonight. Uh, you may have noticed that our signal light is malfunctioning in front of Brahms. Uh, that's been in play for several days now, and it's, it's kind of a pain, but uh, I wanted to bring you up to speed on that, that, that happened when they, the ODOT had contracted to redo much of that intersection and, and several of the road panels along Highway nine. It's our opinion that one of the contractors had, had actually made contact with the wiring under the road. And, uh, even though he didn't sever it, which would have caused immediate issues, he stretched it to the point that it, it, it began taking on water. So, as we got the rains, it filled with water, began to malfunction. And so, we've kinda run it back to the fact that the contractor had, uh, made contact with the wiring, so. Uh, and I think ODOT does agree with that at this point, the contractor offered a small settlement.
Is that the same reason the street lights aren't working above those? 'Cause it's, I mean, unless they've changed it since in the last couple of days, it's dark at that intersection at night too.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to that, but it, to me, it was a little bit dark anyway, even when they were functioning.
All of the overhead street lights are out.
Yes, and, and we've made OG&E aware of that, so. Um, so, uh, back to the, the, the settlement was offered. Uh, we're, we're not gonna settle for what they wanted to do it, but ODOT stepped in and said, hey, we're gonna handle this, we're bidding it out. Uh, we, we assumed that it was gonna be a long process, but we got word today that it, that they're actually gonna be uh, giving a notice to proceed Thursday or Friday, right? So, this Thursday or Friday, we should see work done in. There, they haven't given us an estimated time for completion, but at least they're gonna be, be working to restore the signal, uh, this weekend, so. We'll see how that goes from here. Yes, sir.
They gonna have to cut the street, or is it a bore or what?
I, I would assume a bore, ODOT absolutely cringed when we said, hey, it's gonna be cheaper for us just to cut it, they were like, whoa, wait, now, wait a minute, don't get it out of control, so, I, I would assume that they're just gonna re-bore it, so.
Thank you.
Bet. So, uh, also, I wanna say thank you to, uh, Roy Cisco and to Pam Parks. Uh, if, if you've flown into our airport lately and tried to use, uh, our airport car, you probably didn't have a very good experience. Uh, we had one flying yesterday and wanted to use the courtesy car and it wouldn't start. A little bit embarrassing, so, uh, fortunately, we've got good people like this that step up, they donated a, a minivan and it's gonna, it's, it's just a fantastic thing for our traveling, uh, people that are flying into our airport. Thank you, appreciate your help. Uh, you may have noticed a, an, an inordinate amount of tree trimming going on right now. Uh, I wanna trace this back to our companies, our industries here in town. We had a great meeting out at the Wellness Center with the OG&E executives, uh, expressing some serious concerns about the power interruptions that have been happening. Uh, and, and in many cases, e- equipment is actually being burned up inside the companies and they're, they're having to foot the bill on this, so. Uh, we put kind of a hard press on OG&E and, uh, it's pretty clear to me that they've responded. I don't know that it's the exact problem. We expressed to them specifically that we wanted to see the timelines for the upgrades, the technology upgrades to the Fixico Station. We know it is the station across the street from Brahms, but, uh, that's the Fixico Station. I think there are twenty-seven, what they call switches in there, or twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-two. And, uh, I think only four of those have current technology in those, so. Uh, we asked them for a timeline and they've responded with good tree crews, so we're, at a minimum, we're, we're getting great tree crew, uh, response. So, uh, I think there's, their assumption is that it's really not the technology being the issue, it's more interruption from limbs bumping and, and in fact, I, that probably is the case, I'm not an expert to argue with them, but uh, that's, that is happening. Uh, we had great results so far out of our roadwork that we've done up in, at Gessel and Hoover. Uh, both of those streets are overlaid, we're doing a, a small resurface on Ideal Street, uh, for a small section, uh, very near, uh, the USA tank area. That's going great, Silver Star's doing a great job on that. Um, I wanna say thank you to the Pope family for all that they've done and helped out and allowing us to, uh, the Urban Dull Authority, those folks have really taken it upon themselves, as well as the Main Street Group to refurbish our old aero pump building down by Don Siros. It looks great, if you've not been inside of that, I challenge you, go inside, you really need to see what has happened, it looks great. Uh, now, once we get the facelift on the outside, you'll, you'll, it'll really sparkle, but the inside really needed to help first. In fact, uh, they had a junior high winter formal dance. Cory was the DJ.
I was the entertainer.
Okay, okay.
Said it was great.
Yeah, uh, everybody reported it was fantastic, it may have been a little cool, but, uh, it, it ended up, ended up being great, so it's been fun, uh, to see that rehabilitation going on. Uh, we'll see, uh, some action on our Officer Zach Dennis here shortly. Uh, we don't have, uh, much, uh, that I can report on tonight, an open session, but, uh, Officer Zach Dennis, uh, will have something to, to offer you in the next meeting, so, uh, keep an eye on that. Let's see, roadwork, aero pump, and that should be all I have tonight, thank you.
City attorney. Bring us in the council members, and the only thing I would say is what I say every time, because I think it needs to be said, is that we are well blessed with the staff and all the people that are working for the city of Seminole. I don't know of a city that has anything that can touch us. I'm gonna thank everyone for all that you do, it's just unbelievable.
Larry?
I agree with you, I think that we have bragging rights when it comes to our employees and the guns that they receive. And I just can't emphasize enough the importance to, in supporting women and girls, single mothers and children. By age five, a child reared in a stressed home has already limited his life expectancy or their life expectancy if it's a young girl, um, their health status and their intelligence. And a lot of those homes that are high stress are just from the poverty that goes along with being a single mother and trying to raise children on your own. So, I think our best investment in the future is always to support women and girls, single mothers and children. Thank you.
Thank you. Word two, John?
Uh, I have nothing.
Word three, Cory?
Thank you for going for getting out of voting today, um, I hope everyone did. Um, and the other second was, Steve said about aero pump, that building is amazing. My wife worked there for many years, I had no idea that, every time I saw it, it was full of oil-filled parts and black and dirty and, you know, just, that's what it was, but it really looks good, and they had, they did a really good job with that, so, that's all I have.
Tim?
I don't have anything other than to drive by the Maple Grove Cemetery, and those guys did a really great job, it really looks nice. It just had a facelift that, uh, those guys really, we be commended, thank you.
Word four, Chris?
By the time it gets to me, I'm a broken record, thanks for everybody.
Dee Dee?
Yeah, I don't have anything, how are we coming over our stop signs, have we completed it? Re- replacing or redoing the stop signs that needed?
We, we've replaced, I'm sorry. Yes, we've re- we've replaced most of what we've got planned. Uh, we're always replacing more, e- especially if you see one that you think needs to be replaced, just shoot me a text or Mike or whomever, just shoot it to us, we'll be glad to get right out there and it'll be replaced post haste.
Well, we have executive session scheduled at this time, so we have consideration of possible action to enter into executive session. And this is, uh, discussing the purchase or price of a real property, motion is made to go into executive session. All in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, we'll take this in a few minutes.